Welcome to tonight's City Council Special Meeting for November 17, 2025. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the Westminster City Council Meeting of November 17, 2025. We appreciate your attendance, and we would like to remind everyone that our meetings are governed by the rules of the quorum, which are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect during all meetings, including breaks and transitions. To ensure a welcoming and respectful environment, we kindly ask everyone to adhere to the following expectations: No attendee shall disrupt the meeting; threats and intimidation are strictly prohibited; audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker are not allowed; signs and placards are prohibited inside the chamber; All attendees must remain seated in the designated seats and refrain from occupying aisles or blocking doorways. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding as we work together to maintain a productive and respectful meeting. If you are here to speak during public comment, please sign up in the lobby. Sign up closes at 6:45. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demont.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Ha.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nermella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion is an opportunity for the public to speak with the City Council. Each participant will have up to three minutes. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. The city clerk has informed me that we have received no emails and no voicemails we received for tonight's pack. City clerk, would you please call the first speaker? The first speaker is Mark Rosenstein. Okay. Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Matt Harris. Okay, that's going to be after... You're here for the concept review plan?
Yes.
Okay, that's going to be downstairs as soon as this meeting's over. This is the only opportunity to speak, though. Right. This is a special meeting that was called because it's a budget issue, and depending on how many people are here to speak, we will get that on the table, and as soon as it's passed, we will go downstairs. But there is no public discussion during study session, and that's what we will move from, is a study session. So if you want to speak now about something, now's the time to speak. Okay, Matthew Curtis. Welcome.
So I don't know if this is on top or off, but I figured I'd take the opportunity that you provided to speak. There is a significant backing behind the individuals that spoke and declined to then speak, so I figured I'd step up. But whether it can be taken in this conversation or a future conversation, I would invite further conversation with the Highland Village neighborhood. There's significant pushback from the neighborhood about the development that will be discussed, it sounds like, in a separate meeting. That's all I really have to say, is I hope we can have further conversation on behalf of the Highland Village neighborhood and all the associated neighborhoods in the surrounding area about a high-rise building that could be going in the neighborhood, and the safety concerns, as well as the high-density housing that's already located within one mile of the neighborhood. So thank you for your time, and if I can answer any questions or have any conversations after this with anybody, I would welcome it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was the last person who was signed up. Okay, and let me just explain how our special... Our study session works tonight. While we'll be hearing something, and at study sessions, we just listen, we're able to ask questions, but especially with what we're discussing tonight, it's a concept review plan, so anything we say isn't in... We're just giving comments of whatever we hear, we haven't heard it yet, so we give feedback to the person that is presenting. It's up to them, then, if they... If what we say goes with what their plan is, or if there's going to be some negotiation with our development group. So there's nothing binding that will happen tonight, but once, if they decide to go to the next step, eventually we'll have to go through the planning session, or the planning meeting, and that's where you will have your first chance to speak, because they will look at everything and decide if they feel it meets all the criteria to move it then to us, and then you'd have a second chance to speak up when it's an agenda item for a council meeting. So just so you understand how that all works, at any time, you are welcome to email any city councilor or give them a call if you have other thoughts. So I just want people to understand how this all works tonight, so you don't get frustrated. That brings us to purpose of special council meeting tonight. I had signed a letter calling for a special city council meeting because we did pass 3H, and that is affecting our budget. So Counselor Demont, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill Number 53 on First Reading, amending the 2026 adopted budget and authorizing a supplemental appropriation from 2026 estimated revenues.
Mayor Protem?
A second.
It's been moved and segmented to pass Counselors' Bill Number 53. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. I will adjourn the meeting at 6:37, and we will head downstairs to the Colorado River Room.
Mayor, if we could, I think there's a second item for council's consideration on the special meeting agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution 22.
Sorry, 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 didn't see it.
Thank you.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 22, amending the 2026 P Plan.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to pass, adopt Resolution 22. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Carmelia? I'm sorry, yeah, Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. I will now adjourn this meeting at 6:37, and we will move downstairs to the Colorado River Room for our study session. Welcome to tonight's study, City Council Study Session. Welcome to tonight's study session for November 17, 2025. City Council reports, Counselor Azadi.
I just wanted to give a shout-out to staff for the onboarding on Saturday. It's redesigned. It was really nice to see. It was a year's worth of information in one day, and I'm sure Jack can attest to how much that's going to help him, and it helps me, and helps, you know, folks. There's just so much, there was so much information, and I want to thank the staff for pulling that together.
So Ha?
Counselor Carmelia? I completely agree, just want to second that. Thank you, I already sent my thank you, but well done to everyone, that was fantastic onboarding. Other than that, no.
I went to the Veterans Memorial, which was great. Citizens Police Academy graduation, those 22 citizens that graduated, 14 got tased, which was amazing to me.
Excuse me, we can't hear you at all. Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sure. And we got to watch them, they had a video of them, so that didn't make me want to do it even anymore than before. Anyway, that was impressive, though. I went to the RMMA discussion about the airport, found out some new news. We have not had as many reports of noise recently, and I found out that we have a new route, and Louisville is getting more attention instead of us. But because of the safety concerns at the airport, it's afraid the highest complaints on safety, and also potential accidents and accidents have happened, that they have scaled down many things. I think it's the economy partly, but the JSX commercial flights no longer fly out of RMMA, they're flying out of Centennial. There's less training schools, just for economic reason, not as many airlines are hiring. They're having trouble getting people in the tower, so they can't hire people for these flights, so they've had to scale it back. So that's why we're not hearing as much about the airport, the noise. They're also almost got all the planes, trans... All the planes to transform, or trans... What do we call it? Over to, they went from leaded fuel to unleaded fuel. That's almost done, they said it would be done within a month. So we've made progress here. We have had very little complaints, but there was quite a few people from Louisville. They did tell me that they're trying to make the routes over big box stores, so it's not as noisy for residents, so that might make a difference, too. I went to the Police Academy Awards, which was a great event, and I'm impressed with citizens that put their life on the line, too, for other people. There was a gentleman there that saved a girl that someone was trying to run over, actually chased her to run over, which was, you watched the video, it was crazy. I would like to talk about the cell tower on Walmart, what's the update of that? Because there's still people out in the north area that have no cell service at all, especially Honeyden Trails, Cheyenne Ridge. I don't know if it's a possibility for a new fire station to have a cell tower for that area, but that is an idea that I have, just so that those people have service, because it's not, it's a safety issue. They won't be able to call the fire department if they need them. There is literally no cell service in those two neighborhoods when I go in there. And mine's pretty bad, but it's not as bad as those two. Also, I've been informed that our Vietnam Memorial was vandalized, and I guess this has happened before, so I don't know what can be done to prevent that, but maybe have a discussion on that. And that's all I have.
Counselor Demont?
Bethan.
Yeah, Protem? I attended Veterans Day.
Police.
I attended the Veterans Day event that was celebrating staff who have provided service to the country, and just overall, everyone who provided service, and any of the many... Forgetting what we call them, service, like the Army, Navy? The branches, thank you, sorry. And that was really well done, as usual, so thank you to staff. And I attended a Front Range Passenger Rail Planning Committee meeting, and, which was pretty short, but trying to plan for what we need to do to align with joint service provisions, and that means we'll probably have to update some documents about where stations can go and the criteria around that, and yeah, that's it for now.
I, too, want to just thank staff, and Parks and Rec especially. They just do a great job with our Veterans Day celebration, and we had a packed house, so it meant a lot to community. Citizens Police Academy is always great, and yes, those 14, I don't know if they're brave or crazy people that got tased, they put that on video, and we had to watch it. And we did have one potty mouth as he was going down. PD Awards, always great, yes, that video was a little alarming. It was a house video that took the video of the car that was ramming into the house, not once but twice, and then going around in a circle because of the way their driveway was and everything, and then you saw them almost mowing down the person that was running in circles, and finally another neighbor came down that was recognized and saved her and helped get everything. It was a mess, but anyway, all before our eyes with motion detectors and everything these days. So I also had Northwest Mayors and Commissioners meeting, I sent out all of the notes that we had, because we did have a... The letter is going to our delegation for DC and to the airport and to the county commissioners around aviation, and the big discussion is, that others after me will have to discuss, is whether aviation belongs in the policy statement that the Northwest Corridor has, but many of us that have had, because this coalition's been together over 25 years, and it started out as just US 36, and so Boulder, parts of Boulder, and Longmont, and Erie, and Lafayette, and Superior, some of them did not have direct access to 36 when that started, but they were still part of that, and now we've expanded to 119, 287, Highway 7. So we just reminded everyone that was a little leery about adding an airport or air travel, because Erie has an airport, Boulder has an airport, Longmont has an airport, and Jeffco has their airport. So that decision hasn't been made to put it into policy, so that will happen in the months ahead. Longmont has, because it's their airport, they started landing needs, and so other airports that the cities that own them are looking at that and possibly going to suggest that to the Jeffco Commissioners. So I sent you everything, so you all have it, and that's where we're at with that. And with the rail, just nobody's painted anything good about anything happening, and that RTD is short of money, we have 45 million city... We have forty-five million sitting in that FISA, and I can't tell you how many times that FISA money has been taken and used, and then they try to put back, and they're just going to take it again, so we'll see. That's it.
That's it.
For you folks.
All right, Mayor, I do have a brief report this evening, and we'll get into the next item up tonight. If I could start, thank you, Abby. By way of city update, I want to make sure that everyone's aware tomorrow night is Mayor McNally and myself hosting our monthly Tuesday Community Update Meeting, and tomorrow night's is about the continuum of compassion. We'll be joined by Parks Recreation Library's Director, Eric Otzelberger, Police Chief Norm Hubbard. And the time for that will begin at five-thirty tomorrow night upstairs in Council Chambers, and we'll be finished by six-thirty. We usually share information out for about half of that and then open the rest up for questions and answers for the members of the public who come. Next slide, please. I also want to give an update, an early update, that our City Hall lighting ceremony is scheduled. Our Parks, Rec and Libraries crews have been busy getting them set up around the City Hall campus, so that will be happening. This is projecting it out, so you can put it on your calendar, Saturday, December sixth, beginning at five-thirty and going through till eight o'clock. And I'll have more information on that as we get closer to the event, but I wanted to have you all mark your calendars for that. Next slide, please. Before that, you can actually kick the holiday season off with us at our Holiday Lighting festivities in downtown Westminster. And that will be happening on November twenty-second on Saturday, and that will run from four to eight PM at the Central Plaza in downtown Westminster. And this year, we're combining it with a holiday market, so Holiday Market and Downtown Lighting Ceremony, Saturday, November twenty-second, from four to eight at the Central Plaza in downtown Westminster. Next slide, please. On tonight's agenda, this is a recap, we just held upstairs our special meeting of City Council, so that's wrapped up tonight. In this room, we have three items before you. The first is a concept plan review for Highland Village Two, multi-family development. Next up will be discussion to finalize the application for the upcoming City Council vacancy. And then next up will be the two thousand and twenty-six Budget Development Process debrief discussion. That's what the White Boards are here for, and we will have City Council give us your feedback on the two thousand and twenty-six Budget Development Process and help us get ready for the two thousand and twenty-seven process. Next slide, please. This week is a busy week at City Hall. As I mentioned, on Tuesday, tomorrow is our monthly Community Update with the Mayor and I. That's on the continuum of compassion. Also, tomorrow night is our Planning Commission meeting and our Unified Development Code Workshop, and that's here at City Hall, and that will run from seven PM till nine PM. On Wednesday this week, the nineteenth, is a Special Permit and Licensing Board meeting, that's here at City Hall also, and that starts at six PM. On Thursday, there is a meeting of the Rental Housing Committee, that's also here at City Hall, and that's an afternoon meeting from four to five PM. Then on Saturday, November twenty-second, as I've mentioned, that is the downtown Westminster lighting ceremony. Kicks off at four o'clock with the market as well, cocoa for the kids, and then when it gets dark, we will turn the switch on the lights. Next slide, please. At our next meeting of City Council, I have two slides on this, it's a busy night for us. We'll begin with a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. On Consent Agenda, there will be seven items. There's one public hearing next week, and that is the consideration of a remand of an official development plan for Uplands Filing Two, Block Two, P A B two. So this is the one that was remanded in September, back to the Uplands team, and they've come back to Planning Commission, and will be here before you next Monday night. Under New Business is a first reading of Counselors Bill Fifty-One. That's a cell tower, very timely, Counselor Ireland. That's a cell tower lease agreement with T-Mobile at the Countryside Recreation Center. So that's the Countryside Pool and Rec Center cell tower. And then there's also a first reading of Counselors Bill Fifty-Two. That's a cell tower lease agreement with STC Five at nine zero one eight Field Street. So two cell towers next week.
Side of town.
Wrong side of town. Counselor Ireland, I will get an update for you, for all of Council on the one at Target and Idea Forest Tower at the station. We'll have staff follow up on that. Next slide, please. Also, at our next meeting of Council, under Old Business is the second reading of Counselors Bill Forty-Seven regarding the Employee Four Oh One A Defined Contribution Plan. And then there is a General Improvement District meeting also that night. That's a public hearing and Resolution Number Ten, that's a supplemental appropriation to execute a contract for maintenance of downtown Westminster's landscape. Next slide, please. As always, for those members in our audience, you can always report a concern or a question or a service request to the city through our Access Westminster. That's westminstercode.gov/AccessWestminster. If you don't have it, you can get the app for free. Whatever kind of device you have, it's really handy, it's GIS connected, so we'll automatically tag where you are if you see a pothole or a sidewalk crack that we need to fix. Please use that app. You can also reach us during business hours, Monday to Friday, at three oh three six five eight twenty-four hundred, and after hours, we have an AI service. And we're often able to help you after hours that way as well. Our website is westminstercode.gov, and we have four social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, X, and Nextdoor. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions? Okay. Next up is Presentations, Concept Plan Review for Highland Village Two, Multi-Family Development. Welcome to staff. The next item is a Concept Plan Review for Highland Village Two, Multi-Family. This is a Concept Plan Review, it is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow City Council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on City Council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with Westminster Municipal Code, Concept Plan Reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff performs a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for an O D P, P D P, or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after the Concept Plan Review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction, and then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. The City Council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City Council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and are not binding on City Council, the Planning Commission, city staff, or the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Rev Beetzl, Planner with the Department of Community Services. I'm here tonight to provide the staff introduction to this Concept Plan Review. The proposed development is for the three-point-three acre vacant property designated as Parcel A within the Highland Village community. It's located along Sheridan Boulevard between Ninety-seventh Avenue and Ninety-sixth Avenue. The subject property is owned P U D and designated mixed-use neighborhood in the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan. The proposal is requesting to allow multifamily as the primary use and an increase in the allowable density. The proposed development includes one hundred and eighty-one multifamily residential units, podium parking, a pool, clubhouse, and approximately ten thousand square feet of ground floor retail space. The multifamily community will take access from Sheridan Boulevard at both Ninety-seventh Avenue and Ninety-sixth Avenue. For the applicant to pursue development of this property, they would need to process a preliminary development plan amendment and an official development plan amendment. The original concept for the Highland Village community was an additional mixed-use neighborhood development, also known as T-Mund. The subject property, Parcel A, was intended to provide approximately twenty thousand to forty thousand square feet of retail, office, and service-oriented uses. So any residential uses were intended to be accessory or secondary to non-residential uses. The current site design proposes multifamily residential as the primary use, exceeds the maximum height limit for multifamily, and encroaches into the required setback from Sheridan Boulevard, Major Arterial Street. Notice was provided for the Concept Plan Review meeting tonight. The applicant posted four signs on the property and mailed over six hundred notice letters. The notifications all took place on or before November seventh. Also, on September seventeenth, the applicant held an informal public engagement meeting with the Highland Village community at their HOA clubhouse. This meeting was not a city requirement, it was a proactive effort by the applicant to engage the neighborhood and receive initial feedback prior to this meeting and their formal application process. So if the applicant chooses to advance these applications, the public will have opportunity to provide input during the review process. First opportunity will be accommodated by the city-required neighborhood meeting that will take place between the first and second technical review cycles. The second and third opportunities will be held at the public hearings of Planning Commission and then City Council at later dates to be determined. This concludes the staff intro and overview, and the applicant is ready to present their concept plan.
Good evening, my name is Lane Gearhart, I'm the Development Manager with the Garrett Companies, here to give you the project overview. I'll go through some of these first slides, and quickly, as Rev just went through our location off of Sheridan, east of Thirty-Sixth. One of the reasons we do like this site is the proximity to the existing retail to the south with Trader Joe's, Walmart, Best Buy, and the restaurants in that area, as well as the parks, the Farmers' Island Canal, Big Fall Park. It's a community that's five to ten minutes walkable from a lot of these amenities, and we think makes a great place for residents to live. The existing PDP, as she mentioned, was approved back in two thousand and seven, almost twenty years ago. Primarily single-family homes in the blue and purple area on here, and about a hundred and sixty multifamily apartment units existing in the orange in Parcel B. I won't go too much detail into what Parcel A was, as she covered it, but it was intended to be twenty to forty thousand square feet of retail. Over the last almost twenty years, multiple developers have owned this site and have been unsuccessful bringing retail to this area. There's just been a, the market has changed over that time, and the kind of original boutique neighborhood concept that was envisioned is tough to do these days. Retailers want to see that anchor store, they want to see that foot traffic and be where they know that they can have those customer bases, and it's been a struggle to get someone like that here. The existing site, I think, as we've seen, is a vacant field as a result of that process. I won't go through the comp plan too much, because she mentioned this, but this is a mixed-use neighborhood that is envisioned for this site. Getting into our specific site plan, we're proposing two buildings on this site comprising the hundred and eighty-one units she mentioned. Building one is kind of the main building, which is where the retail would be located, it's where the amenities, clubhouse would all be. And that's the building that would be situated above our structured parking facility. The entrance is proposed off of Ames, two entrances to the garage on that side of the street with a large retail street front presence on Ninety-seventh. Here's the highlight of where we envision that retail going. Again, it's about ten thousand feet that we're proposing here, located along the north end of the site. A little bit of background, our company, well, we do, we have Garrett Restaurant Group, we have experience owning and operating restaurants in the Denver area. Whether we would do it ourselves or use one of our partners we've worked with is something we'd still decide, but the intent is that we are building out this restaurant as part of construction, so that we know where the building, there's going to be something there, that we're not just building ten thousand feet that's going to sit vacant. And that probably wouldn't be the whole component, we'd supplement that with other spaces, depending on how the lease-up goes. But the intent is that we're putting something there at the start. Few renderings, just to show the idea of the project, obviously, these are very early in the process, and so colors, materials are still things we're working through. But highlighting here along Ninety-seventh Avenue, that retail front we're talking about. This is a five-story building, we recognize that's taller than what is considered for this location, and the primary driver of that is the ability to get the retail in the site, just in order to make that component work. We're looking for that additional height. Coming around to the side, this is Ames, the more neighborhood sides, the neighborhood-facing side of the project. You can see the parking entrances, you can see the setback in the middle across from the existing village green, trying to blend a little bit with the character of what's existing there today. And then coming around to the south side, this is building two that was referenced on the site plan. The intent is that we're keeping consistent materials across these two buildings, we really want them to look and feel like one cohesive project, despite being two separate structures through here, and just one more view of the Sheridan side there. And so a couple snapshots, just showing what we do is the Garrett Company, we've built over fifteen projects in the Denver area, providing amenities for our residents, including communal kitchens, lounge space, fitness centers, game areas, really creating spaces for our residents to use and enjoy within the community that they live in. Our apartments include modern appliances, light open bedrooms, walk-in closets, and spaces that we're proud for our residents to live. Getting back to that height analysis, I want to highlight, one of the unique aspects of this site is that there's about twenty feet of grade change along Sheridan here, with the south side being taller than the north. That gives us an opportunity, we believe, to put the retail on that north side on Ninety-seventh Ave, while still allowing that height line to be consistent across the two buildings. We recognize that the height is a concern and believe this is the most effective way to minimize that impact and put it on that side of the project. A couple examples showing how it compares to the existing Caliber building next door. That's a three-story building, we're four stories on the south end, but some efforts we're taking to mitigate that impact, we're proposing flat earth here, just to reduce the height that we need to go up with a pitched and shingled system, like was done in the previous project, so a couple more images showing that. And then parking is something, as Rev mentioned, we had a meeting, it was about two months ago, and parking was one of the big takeaways from that meeting, is concerning in this neighborhood, both from residents of the existing Caliber as well as guests. A lot of parking on the street and making it difficult for residents to park near their homes. We're, we greatly increased the number of parking spaces per unit as part of our proposed plan here. We're about a quarter space a unit above the required zoning, and we're also proposing to include that parking in the rent. That's not something we've done before, but in response to what we heard at that meeting, we think it provides a solution that could help reduce the problem. If parking is not an additional fee on top of someone's base rent, they're much more likely to park in the garage in addition to the convenience of just being able to park and take your groceries up through the elevator without coming in from the street. We think that's a really great opportunity we have here and something that we're willing to commit to try and mitigate that concern. We do have a few retail spaces provided in the garage, just want to make sure that if folks are coming from outside the neighborhood, they have a spot to park. And then highlighting, we do have more spaces than bedrooms in the building, so if you're in a three-bedroom, you're not limited to one space or anything like that. We have the ability to make sure that residents have the appropriate numbers to go with their unit. And a couple more slides, just showing, based on what we've seen in our other projects, who is likely to live here. This is adjusted for unit count, but we see a lot of folks, medical services, nurses, doctors, trades, constructions, teachers. It's a working-class community, folks that would live and work in the area. And, you know, this isn't every single resident in the building, but these are some of the largest concentrations of what we typically see in a project like this. And then part of the reason we believe this is a good project for the area, vacancy rates have been falling just over the last twelve months, and with, I think, limited supply coming online, obviously, there's some single-family homes being built nearby, a little further up north on Sheridan, but there's not a lot of multifamily projects in the works, and that tends to push down vacancy rates, so we believe that there's going to be a demand for these. The Caliber next door is over ninety-five percent occupied, which is a great place to be at this time. I think this offers a great opportunity to provide for folks that want to live in the area that, for whatever reason, might be at a point where they're looking to be in a single-family home. So that's my overview for the project, and would love to hear questions and thoughts you all have.
Counselor Ireland? Speak up.
I am not a family bit. I think we have too many rentals already that would like to see for sale properties. I hear people all the time that want to own something. This isn't, our city's getting non-family oriented at all. I rent an apartment, you can only have two kids in an apartment. And so the vacancy rate is going up. We're thirty-two hundred now, so don't tell me it's going down, cause it's not. And rents are going down, by the way, and incentives are going up. I don't like how close it is to the road. I don't like that it's five stories. I don't like anything about it except for the parking. The parking is great. I wish every apartment in this city had that kind of parking. But other than that, I'm, I'm not for it.
Counselor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. Uh, my question's, the, the first piece of it is really focused on the affordability. What are you thinking on cost, on pricing?
Um, sorry, I, I don't know the exact rents off the top of my head. I know they're all been in the eighty to ninety percent AMI range is typically where we see our base rents, so we're, it's not affordable. We don't market it as an affordable product, but it is a, a workforce housing is where we often see this come in. So I, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me for this one, uh, but that's where we expect it to be.
Eighty to ninety seems so, but, but it's not an affordable project. Right? Um, that's not likely then, right? That it's gonna be mar, it's a market rate.
That's, that's where we set the market on our rents. We're not, we're not trying to deal luxury, set the most expensive apartments in the city. Uh, we, we, that's the number that works for our delivery that gets us to the stabilization where we wanna be at the, the right rate and pace and for that cost that we build, that, that works for us, so.
So you're, 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 you're planning on setting it below, below market? Is what you're saying?
That's, do you have any?
Do you mind if I tell the, I'm with Garrett Companies. My name is Jordan Reisman. Um, there was an extra seat there, so I let, let everyone else sit. Um, thanks. Shit. It's not rent restricted, so there's not gonna be a rent or income restriction, but based off of all the properties that we've operated in the front range, typically our rents, uh, that we need to make, make a deal work is typically between eighty to a ninety percent AMI. Um, so that varies between submarket to submarket. Uh, you know, we're, we're not trying to push the highest rent possible. That's not the, um, that's not our goal as the Garrett Companies, but we're also not income or rent restricted like a tax credit project would be.
Yeah, that's a concern for me because I don't know how realistic that would be in this environment economically. Um, I feel like it would come in market and market right now is out of control. So if, as you go through this project and you figure out pricing, the affordability aspect is really, really important to make sure it's an affordable project. Um, that's gonna be hard to do, especially in this area. So, so this is next to a existing apartment building?
That's right. That's correct.
And what's the vacancy in that one?
Five points.
Five percent.
Yeah.
Um, but that's one piece. I do like that the parking is included in the rent, assuming you're not marking up the rents to make that happen, right? Um, so affordability is gonna be key as you go through and you're continuing to iden on this. Uh, so five stories is taller than the existing character of the neighborhood. You say is for the restaurant piece, which is important, right? I like this, um, mixed-use developments, but what, how, how are you planning on making sure the community around, so everyone here, right? And folks who live there, you know, what's your plan on building that buy-in? Because there's a lot of pushback on this. It's a small area. You're putting a lot of units in one tiny area, so there's a lot of concerns from a lot of residents. So what's your outreach plan?
We'll, we'll continue to, as Rev mentioned, though, there's at least one required meeting. We'll, we likely have more than that based on the feedback we've seen from this so far. I, I think what we're trying to accomplish is we reckon, it's been a vacant site for twenty years. I, I think if we don't do this, it could be vacant for another twenty years and there's a decision there. I, there's been complaints about cars that have been parked on the side there that haven't moved in years and things of that nature. I think this would really clean, clean up's the wrong word, but I think this could greatly improve this site, bring some life along the retail front and help make it feel like more of a part of the community as opposed to this empty lot on the edge. And we recognize there's some concerns with the density, but I, I think in order to provide that retail and to provide any sort of activation here, that's a trade-off that would likely have to happen for us.
Can I add to that? Um, so we've been work, we've been talking to this, to the owner of this property for over four years. This has not happened overnight. Uh, we've talked to planning staff for the last two or three years. The reason we're even in this room right now was because we've been having ongoing conversations with planning and economic development about developing a mixed-use project. Um, and through those conversations, planning said, hey, it might be a good time to, to re-engage with this product. The, you know, restaurant mixed-use concept that you guys have been throwing out could be, could be good at this point in time. Um, so after so many different concept plans, we said, okay, what can, what can work for everybody? Cause obviously we have to be able to make a project that's financeable and have a debt partner and investors. Um, the city has to be able to get behind it, it's gotta support the comp plan in one way or another, and the neighborhood needs to get behind it. So all that put together, we came up with this concept that, you know, we thought worked for everybody. Obviously, if it doesn't work for everybody, we understand that. We're just trying to have an ongoing conversation and see, you know, what is it that the city wants, what is it that the neighborhood wants, and what is it that we can deliver? So it's, it's pulling in that the seller, who is a commercial retail developer, um, if anybody was able to bring what the current comp plan shows to this site, it would have been the current owner, but they've been unable to do that.
So I would say that, you know, from the list of stakeholders that you just named, um, the one that's missing is the neighborhood, right?
I thought I mentioned that.
And as you go forward, it, it, there's probably, uh, there is probably middle ground on reaching out a lot more, on focusing on the neighborhood, making sure that since you're still in the brainstorming phase and you're still trying to figure out the design and everything, it will be really, really important for, at least for me, that you reach out extensively to the neighborhood specifically and make sure you collect and incorporate and hear them out, because I think that there are some ideas I'm sure that they can give you, um, to help you mold this project, right? And from the affordability standpoint, that's something I'll be looking out for when you come back to us, but, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And thanks for the presentation. Um, so, yeah, I don't know, I've, I've seen the site sit there for a really long time and I know that the PUD did want to have commercial development there and if this was sort of seen as trying to get something like Bradbury, you know, the village concept of walkable retail. Um, right now, the only retail that's moving is drive-through, whatever. So unless you, you know, I, so I struggle with, um, this site, you know, um, sitting there longer for a future that, um, in terms of retail is not gonna pan it out to even, I, I don't know what's worse for the neighborhood, they'll have to weigh in on whether they want drive-throughs there, if they truly want to just wait for commercial, or if it's something of a mixed-use nature. Um, I, like Counselor Zadi, certainly want you to continue to work with the neighborhood to determine if there are some aspects to this plan that could be more responsive to their concerns. Um, I don't know if it's stepping the building down, um, at a certain point. Um, you know, design-wise, it's really tight. I'm sitting here thinking, how can you make it more responsive to the neighbor, to the, um, neighboring apartment, um, complex and in the design of that, you know, the garage facing onto it is kinda sad, but you kinda don't have many options. I appreciate that you're trying to get a little denser there with the structured parking. Um, it's not a lot of open space, um, for the residents to be using in your, in your development. Um, and, um, let me see what else I have on here. Just kinda, the first staff, is there anywhere else along Sheridan where we have, um, allowed a project to encroach into the setback? You know, the whole entire, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, but it, it kind of in this area.
So I, I'm, I'm going off of memory here. John McConnell, planning manager, um, the neighborhood under construction just north is, I believe, is less than a fifty-foot setback. That was negotiated out through that PUD process. Um, if it is, it's not, much less. It's a, it's a pretty significant setback. Um, there's really no other development that's taken place along Sheridan except for the, uh, across the street, you're familiar with the five-story, um, uh, senior living facilities, changed names several times now. Um, and I don't recall the setback from that, so I'm a bit of a, a loss of definitively answering your question. Um, but there's not a lot of new development other than what you see under construction right now.
Okay. It might be how, you know, as you're continuing to work on this project, to kinda think about, is there some precedent, um, for what we've allowed for setback along Sheridan? And, you know, certainly something that is tangible and that can be viewed and is that something that is acceptable? Um, the restaurant, just real quick, uh, what is the likelihood of it surviving at this location? I mean, there's a lot of, certainly, there's a lot of people that already live there and in the area. Sheridan's pretty busy. Um, you talked about potentially putting one of your restaurants into it. Can you talk a little bit more about the true viability of it?
Yeah, I mean, we have two, two case studies right now. We have one in the Denver Tech Center and then we have one down in the Meadows Master Plan Development in Castle Rock. Um, so the one in Castle Rock, it's very, uh, neighborhood and nature. You know, there's single-family townhomes, apartments all around it and you'll get the, the kids and the families that come over after sporting events and it's just really a, a community space for everyone to use. Um, you know, it is tough. It is really challenging to operate restaurants in, in this environment, but the fact that we can deliver this restaurant space at the cost that we can by incorporating it into the apartments allows us to be, uh, more flexible with the lease terms. And, and, you know, certain, certain, um, restaurant users can't pay a lot for that rent. They just can't, um, cause the operations are so expensive. So our thought is, can we have this retail? Can we have this restaurant space as an amenity to our residents and in turn, an amenity to the rest of the neighborhood? And our thought is, the experience living at our apartments is gonna be better if this restaurant amenity is there. So we, we look at it both ways.
Just, um, not, I see what you're doing with the heights and the, the grade, so I think it's generally reasonable. I know it seems higher with respect to the south, like the north side. Um, but the twenty feet of all was pretty significant. Um, I don't know if lopping off a, a floor, um, or a level, maybe just on the north end might be helpful to the neighborhood. You'd have to, you know, go through that conversation with them. So, um, yeah, it's about it.
Thank you.
Camellia?
Um, I wanna say I like, I was, let's just call out some of the pros. I really like the mixed-use development and I like that, like you said, it feeds the retail that's there. You know, we do have a shopping center that we're currently expanding upon. We've just recently really expanded upon that area. Um, I'm curious, what other types of retail do you think we can expect there, aside from the restaurant?
I think it's still early. I mean, I think ideally we'd love, you know, a coffee shop or something like that in there. Whether we can bring one in, it's tough to tell at this point, whether it's, you know, a small, I think, kind of soft goods store is probably unlikely in this scenario just because of the traffic you're gonna have. So I think it's looking at a coffee shop or some small kind of service-oriented type store are the most likely opportunities. Um, I don't, don't have a great answer for it other than that, but that's.
And so, and there's no versions of this proposal that don't include the retail component?
At, at this point, um, coming into this, we thought the retail was necessary in order to get buy-in from everybody. Uh, from what we've heard, um, from speaking with, with the neighborhood is maybe that retail isn't as important as we thought and maybe it's just, hey, we just don't want apartments here, period. Um, so we're, we're kinda just balancing that right now.
I only suggest that in case we can't find folks to go in there and then it would lower this, by a low story. And it's not just one story, right? Because the bottom level is the tallest and so, um, just putting out, out there.
That's exactly.
But I'm not in the office, so.
Yep.
Um, and then this is for staff. We've asked a couple different versions of this, but, um, what are the current vacancy rates throughout the city for apartments?
Um, that's, would be a housing question. I can get the answer for you unless there's any housing staff with us tonight. So, okay.
Okay. I'm just trying to better understand the demand, which I understand, obviously, we wouldn't be in this place if we didn't feel like there was demand. Um, but I want to make sure that there's truly, that this is the demand we're seeing. I understand too that we need to hedge this against what offers we're gonna see. Um, but I know that the majority of us here are really interested in things that sell versus things that rent, but, um, it'd be good to have a better idea of what the demand is.
Yeah. I'm, I'm curious to see how it might change after some community input. Um, I do like mixed-use. It does seem like a lot in a small space. Um, so, I mean, while this is something that I generally like, I guess I'm, I guess I'm just not sure if this is the spot for it because of the size. Um, but I, I guess I, I'm more curious to see how, um, the plans, because if you're gonna get community buy-in, I, I'm sure there's gonna be changes because what you have currently, you have a lot of people here who are not happy. So, um, I, I guess I'm more curious to see, um, how it changes after you have those conversations because, um, what you have here now is not, it's not gonna clearly work for, for the community. So I, I'd like to see how it changes, um, over time if you decide to, um, go forward and I'd like to, to hear, um, what the community has to say and, um, you know, if, if we can do something that works for the community and have something there, like, I think that's, that's what's best. Um, but I think what you have, I think it's pretty clear that this current, um, plan is, is not, it's, it's not gonna, I don't, I don't think that it's gonna happen. So I, I, I'm more curious to see how it changes if you go forward, depending on what the community, um, what their asks are and how you might be able to work together.
Counselor Demond? I was just gonna share, Counselor, remember about three weeks ago, we were sharing the vacancy rate in Westminster is seven point two percent versus the Denver Metro at a whole of eleven percent, which is trending downwards is what we were told on the twenty-second in the memo from the city's insurance office. Um, as far as the plan, um, I would think, one, height is always sensitive, but I did think as we looked at this, the senior, uh, living one that was called out by Mr. McConnell and I was gonna ask who was five-story, so I recollections, that's pretty close across from it. So I know if the characters sew out, I think, um, recommendation is if you go forward with this plan, the best you could try to fill some of that space when you propose it and know I've seen other developments where you have, uh, folks already slated to fill some of the, the space, especially a restaurant, like that probably would help your efforts. But in general, I would have to say that the parking is good. Um, that's a, a good change from something, I think, that's been one of the concerns we hear in these kind of properties, but otherwise I don't have other feedback. Thank you.
For me, I agree. We've been, we're, we've got people begging, our young people begging for a place to buy and start getting their equity, not rent and throwing their money out the window. So, um, I'm always looking for the entrepreneur that's gonna help them find a home, help us develop homes, thinking outside of the box. We have one developer that's doing that with us. Um, that's our need, that and senior housing. Um, tho, those two, two elements, I believe, uh, with the amount of, um, with the amount of apartments that are either built or on the books to be built are more than enough for the moment. And the reason you took out a lot of your space for retail, and I was here in two thousand and seven. So I was mayor back then, first time. And I know what that plan looked like. And yes, it was very much like Bradburn. But with your statement tonight of why you've changed to just a small piece, there's nothing in the world that convinces me those will fill up. Because you can walk straight south and there's one of our biggest Starbucks ever sitting in that complex next door. You've got great shopping, both sides of the street that people can walk and access. So, um, and, and the height, I'm, I'm one that, I mean, five stories is a lot and I don't care if you make flat roofs or whatever. It's just a lot for, for our area and to be on top of Sheridan, so. That's where I'm at. So you've heard from all of us. Anybody else have anything else?
One last comment, too. I'm not convinced that the community is against development. So I hope when you approach those, these stakeholders, I, I think there is room for negotiation with the neighborhood. I don't think they're against development. I think there's specific a- aspects of this that can be changed.
Thank you. As stated at the outset of the concept plan review, councillor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, the planning commission, or city council to any course of action for future decision. That brings us to discussion to finalize the application for the upcoming city council vacancy. And I would love for Jack Johnson to join us up at the table. I think it's only right and fair, you are elected to come on December first. And this discussion has to do with something you're going to be a part of, so we would welcome your voice. Councilor Camelia, I'd like to go through this discussion to get it, if you're still ready for your December first meeting.
Okay, first off, I just want to ask, did everybody get their feedback in to Abby? Because, uh, and I know that yours, yours came to me, and so I, or you can bring up some of the items. If anyone didn't get it incorporated in here specifically, then let's go through and read through and make sure that they've incorporated any items that might not have made it to her. And then we can go through and make sure that we like it as a whole and what pieces we prefer. So aside from Mayor Pro Tem, is there anyone else? Did everybody get feedback in in that time?
No, I, I just, I'm just going to sit out and, you know, and I got my, uh, wait.
So, um, I, I can summarize the feedback to start. From the people I heard from, of the two applications we sent, both people liked the twenty nineteen version better than the twenty twenty-one version. And then, um, somebody asked me to include the spirit values question in with this version, which has been done. The spirit values in this draft are out of date. The, there's pride and that is now people. And then the other one is. Respect is in, instead of responsibility. I apologize for that. That was my error. And then also question. Councillor, councillor, councillor submitted, and I didn't know if they wanted to ask that in the interview or if they wanted to ask that in the application. So I would like a little clarity on that as well. But other than that, please, please give your feedback.
So let's clarify fifteen first, because this is the first time I'm reading it. So the person who wanted to add this, is this something we wanted to put in the application itself and then we could argue over it?
This was my question. So not going through this process before, other than being interviewed, are the interview questions different than the ones that we asked in the application?
They, they can, you can handle it any way city council chooses. In the past, the past probably four appointments, city council has each chosen two questions apiece to ask. And I don't know if they were agreed upon or if they were just submitted and they asked whatever they wanted to ask. So, but that, that is council's decision completely. But they don't match the application.
Well, they don't match?
They don't match, yeah. They are different questions. They can be similar, why are you qualified? You know, it, or it can be totally different, but they did not match the past applications.
Okay, well, I'd be fine if that was my question.
In the interviews?
I don't know if we all submitted a question to that, something else that question. I don't recall how it was done since probably two thousand, it was a long time ago I did this, so two thousand and nineteen or maybe, anyway. So I didn't remember if the questions that they asked me were the same as I filled out.
Yeah, they were not. Um, so what has happened in the past is that applicant, applicants fill out the application. It was one set of questions and then the council asked totally separate questions. There were some similarities, but they were not the same.
Okay, well, I'll have that as my question if you're all okay with that.
It's a hard question. Make it better answers if you give people more of an opportunity to think about it.
You want me to leave it on here?
I mean, I, I would just say, I, that's a great question. And if you ask that to me without preparing.
If you all, if it's a great question, but I'm going to ask it when I hear that.
I just think it's, it's especially hard to answer if you haven't had prepared. That's a lot of money to spend.
I'm going to make just a quick comment, let's, let's make a council demand. But it sounds to me like we need to clarify the process for how we're going to ask our two questions before we can finish figuring out our interview questions. So I think we should pause for a quick second, clarify the questions and how we're going to handle that piece. And then to the interview questions, so that we're not trying to do two things at once.
I would suggest that after we see all the applications and see the quality level of the answers, because there, there may be answers that someone puts on that we want, that one of us may want to ask a deeper, you know, follow-up. So we should define what the in-person questions are after we see everything versus doing it before we even see.
Okay, well, I'm fine with leaving it on there and then I can do something more in-depth after their answers.
I'll take too much into your guys' questions because they won't be here, but just, um, I'm curious. You have the Westminster resident for one year that already registered, but they actually have to be a registered voter for a year.
That is correct.
As if you could be a registered voter for a year, but you can all buy.
So combining them, if it's an eligibility question, you could consolidate it into one.
I think you want to, because I think that is the eligibility that you have to cross. That's the only thing I was.
Shouldn't those be pre, pre-screened before we, like, we shouldn't see someone who hasn't, right?
Correct.
I think that's the point of that question.
Yeah, i- if in the past, they have, there have been applications where they have answered no to those and those applications weren't passed on to council.
We had somebody who made it through election ballot choosing process that.
So what is staff's process for pre-screening?
That would.
So that it's not a voluntary question? It should be like checkable, right?
Yeah, they, um, that, that would be the only pre-screening that staff would do is eligibility. And, um, I, as when somebody runs for office, I verify that they are a registered voter and they do reside in the city of Westminster. I don't have access to how long they've lived in Westminster, so that is kind of an honor system. But I do, I, they currently have to live in Westminster and be a registered voter here.
We can take out that question then?
I, well, I need it.
Oh. But if they say yes, but it's really no, you can, you verify?
Yeah.
So you see what I mean?
I guess, yes, technically I can take it on, yes.
Because you're verifying anyway.
Okay.
I think, I think you should leave it on. I think you should make it clear that those are qualification questions. But I also don't want someone to fill out, there's a lot to fill out. And if you write question five, you realize you're ineligible, let's not waste someone's night.
Well, like if they don't, it's the packet, yeah.
Yeah.
It's true, you may not know.
I, I agree. I think it should be clarified a year.
So I'm just going to clarify where we're at. So we are going to, and I just want to clarify the interview process first real quick before we finish this, which is, we're all going to ask our own questions. It sounds like possibly two, but we can discuss thumbs up or thumbs down in just a moment. And that they will not be the same as this one. And so just have those in the back of your mind. And I agree with councillor Rosati that we can decide what those are for ourselves going forward. Last meeting, I think we said it would be one question and now we're saying maybe it's two?
There, you. You, council can do it any way they choose. In the past, they've asked two questions and it is allowed for a twenty-minute interview per, per person. Which has been standard for a while, but obviously, just because it's been done in the past, it does not have to be done that way in the future. The, they've submitted the questions beforehand, so the questions are in front of each councillor. And, um, a package is put together, so everybody's councillor's questions are there, all the applicants and applicant material is there. But whether or not you would like council to ask one or two or twenty-five questions, it's completely up to you all.
So I'll pause there. Any thoughts on two?
I think it depends on how many applicants we have. If it's like hun- a hundred and all asking two questions, it could go on.
So.
Just, just to clarify, when we went through it, since we went through it many times, usually, but still, to Cliff Rich's point, it was timed and we had a certain amount of questions. We didn't necessarily always get through them. And the mayor would always read, you're going to get this many questions, you have twenty minutes. We each have two questions. Faster you get through your answers, the better chance you have to answer each, each of the council members' questions. Some people finish sooner, some people would waste most of their time on two questions. So, you know, that is something that, in, in the time we've done that, that the mayor has pointed that out to people, so they understand what they're doing at the time of their interview.
Have, have the councillors ever pre-screened candidates prior to an interview? Have you ever gotten so many that you've?
Yeah, we, we would narrow it down because typically we wouldn't necessarily interview all of them.
What's the procedure that you've used historically for narrowing it?
They've done it, I think, in the four times I've went through it, we've done it different ways because we've had different council members throughout the time that I've been here. So, you know, it was a group decision to councillor Fritsch's point. Council has a lot of discretion about how you do the process.
Some of the ways they have done it, they have interviewed everybody, but I think there were only eight applicants. Yep, there were eight applicants. One of the, in twenty eighteen, there were sixty-five applicants. So they did narrow that down. They did it through polling over email, which is, is a possibility. You can also, we have logged out time on December eighth to talk about narrow, narrowing the candidate pool if we want to do it that way. So you can do like a public narrowing down of the candidates. There, there's, they have been done different ways, so it's, it's up to you.
Also, most of the council, as well as like employee selection, like judge or we were judge multiple city managers my time. And so you've got a lot of applicants, sometimes council would agree on, we're going to pick, say, ten people out of the sixty. You pick your, your top ten, and then we agreed that staff would look at it and say, okay, out of these ten, who got four votes? Or they would give us statistics, like this many people got five votes, this many people, and then we would say, okay, we're going to take all the five through three votes, depending on what it was. So, and then we would drop the rest of them off.
Yeah, I like the anonymous nomination process for at least the first screening stage.
There's only five.
Right, so we can determine that as soon as we know how many are vote, how many votes we've got. That seems like a great idea to me, and so at least we have a few proposals. At this time, it sounds like we all know that we're going to be asking one or two. We can final, we can nail that down, it sounds like at that next meeting as well. So, okay, thank you for that time, just so now we can go back to this, just so we have a better idea of what that looks like. I think that helps us look through these questions and know. It sounds like, Abby, we need the pre-screened questions on there, so we'll leave those alone.
I, I'll, I'll clarify to make sure that people understand that, that is eligibility. And if the answer is no, or if they have not been here for a year, they will not be able to move forward in the process.
Okay. With that, I'll just pause. Are there any questions missing that we'd like to add? Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, I liked the, the other prompt, which was the, what is the role of government versus the pride, or sorry, versus the spirit? Question, I just thought it would open up their, the applicants' thinking about, you know, the kinds of discussions we often have as a group about what we should, you know, what's our charge. So throwing that out there.
Agree with her. I really didn't like that question. That, that's why I like nineteen better, because it didn't have a. What's one of the reasons?
We're not limited to nineteen questions, though.
Twenty nineteen.
I'm not saying that we can have both questions.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we don't have to choose between those two.
I think we should have both.
Okay, yes, no, just a thumbs up on both?
Kind of cruel, but I guess.
Well, they didn't, they didn't have to run an election. They can fill out twenty questions.
All right, does anyone feel strongly that? Okay, I'll just say that I'm okay with both. I just think that government perhaps should be clarified to municipal government or city. What is the role of city government?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because I don't want to get a tangent on that.
Yeah.
Or county.
Yes. Uh, so I'm happy with both then. Okay. Pausing there. I think there are a few others of yours that are not in here. Do you want to bring those up?
Yeah, it was just, um, number thirteen. Yeah, number thirteen, it's asking, what is the most important issue facing Westminster and how will you address it? I just thought it would be more helpful to hear more than, about more than one issue to, for me, it's important for somebody to understand what are the issues facing the city and not just be joining for one purpose. That there is an understanding that we have multiple things going on. So, um, I'll offer that up for number thirteen. And the only other edit I'll just shout out is, um, number ten, for education. If we can add work experience, sometimes somebody might not have, you know, education to want, but maybe they have really cool work experience or something, so to have, have that be on there.
All right, let's pause and bring those down. Does anyone see an issue with correcting thirteen to say multiple issues?
I think that's fine.
Okay. So, okay. And then, uh, adding education, do we, does anyone have a problem with adding work experience?
I think we should add ed- um, work experience. I don't think we should limit it to education.
Well, you've got a resume. I, I'd like to see a resume personally. I don't like reading, you know, when you have to type in your work experience, people. You know, when you have to type in your work experience, people can be a little funky with that. And then, and if they don't have resume at this point, I don't know.
A lot of applicants would attach resumes. I feel like that's part of, in my opinion, as I went through the people who added a resume. Got a different look than people who didn't take the time to add a resume. I feel like that's like a, are you. Putting in a professional application. I don't think it was recommended. Maybe it was.
It was, it was um, it was optional. I don't know if it was always optional, but on the last set of instructions I found, they did say. You are welcome to add a resume and or a cover letter.
Some people did.
I think we should require that instead of asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Should require them to upload a resume.
Um, good point.
Nineteen ninety-nine, you know, just show me your poll.
Oh, right.
I'm not, I don't care if they have a resume. I'm, I'm all about. And filling in a good application. It's not. Some people are just doing the service, you know? Their whole life's about service. And they might not have a big, long resume, but they may be amazing at serving their community.
Right, service is still experienced. You can, you can make your resume about your public service and that still is a resume.
And I think that, you know, that if certain counselors are gonna look to a resume as a deciding factor, we should require it. Because we don't want people to leave off a resume and be discounted, but I don't think you have, like, for your decision, you wouldn't have to look at a resume to make your decision. But we don't want people to miss that opportunity simply because they didn't attach a resume that they may have had.
Okay, let's call it. Who wants to see a resume required? Like, that's the majority?
Can we, to Counselor Ireland's point, can we just, on the question asking for the resume, just say. You know, outline your education, service, and work experience, so people don't feel like they're narrowed out for some reason.
I have my service on my resume. It's not just my work experience. I also have my volunteer stuff on my resume too. So anybody who has done a lot of volun- that should be on their resume.
But I, I think to the point where some folks may, if they don't have the career career, you know. And have a resume at hand, but might help have, it might help to have some guidance on what could I put on a resume. And yes, you can put your public service and volunteer work on this resume.
And so you're recommending we add that to the language for the instructions?
Yes.
Okay. Are we okay with that?
Yes, do, do you want to add a cover letter, optional or required?
Personally, I'm just gonna speak up and say that we're adding requirements already is quite a lot. They feel the will to do so, that's, but let's go around.
I think, I, I think you either have to have it or not. I don't, because optional gives, you know, inequities in the process. If you're gonna make your decision based off a cover letter, you should give everyone, you should tell everyone you're gonna do that by requiring it. If it's not important, you shouldn't waste people's time. And so I would have it either or not. I would, I would prefer not to have the optional stuff.
I don't think that's important. I think the resume is important to understand their experience, but I don't think. I don't think a cover letter is gonna be a deciding factor.
Although that they're trying to get onto city council, the main thing they're trying to do, so.
Okay, I think we have our answer there. Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's pause one more time and look through the questions. Are we sure we want all of these questions? Is there nothing else we want to remove?
I, I have an instruction question, um proposal, which I, I, I think as part of the instructions, you should. Um recommend that you not use generative AI in helping craft answers. Cause I'm not sure we necessarily have the technology to track that, but I think.
We can tell, though.
Yeah, yeah, maybe Obi can tell. I'm not that nice.
It's getting out of control. I totally agree with that and. Uh it's hard to, it's gonna be hard for some people if they're really crafty.
And you've seen.
But.
You know, the, the way I've.
So annoying.
Yeah, and the way I've seen it is like, you know, generative AI is like the instruction says something like generative AI is a great tool in assisting you. But it should not be the primary driver in answering these questions. Cause some people do use it for editing and other purposes that, that may be within the bounds of their own creative spirit, but. Um not answering these questions.
You were not electing ChatGPT. Use your mind. I, I personally am not gonna elect.
All right, any other thoughts on that?
Well, I have to say something funny about that today. I looked up our vacancy rate. And it said Christine Ireland, Counselor Ireland says there's empty apartments already. It's podiuming now.
Okay, all right. Well, if I don't hear any objections, I'll say I'm, I'm not, I don't object to that. I think that what we've done though, however, is provide them a suggestion and not tell them not to do something. That's my opinion on it.
Sorry, I had one, one thought. Um on number fifteen, if we do keep that on there, um. I wasn't sure if you wanted that, that for your question or not.
I can strike your question if everyone thinks it's a good question to ask.
Um, okay, so the only thing I was gonna say is, um, we could potentially lower the surplus down to. Something that we would actually be dealing with, right? I wish we had a hundred million dollars, but like if we wanna really get somebody's thoughts about this. Um like, we could say, what if we had an extra million dollars? Or that's often, you know, we could carry over and we might have that, right? So that's a true decision that we might have to make. And so just a.
The city council in the past has made these hundred million dollars decisions, so I want that answer. So if you guys don't want it on here, I'm still gonna ask it.
Yes. Well, I mean, we have a four hundred million dollar budget, so a hundred million dollars does seem excessive. Okay, I think we might get more honest question or more of an honest answer if we did lower it, so.
Well, I, I, I think, Counselor Ireland, you might get a list of one million dollar answers, a hundred things for one million dollars. And then, I don't know if that's what you're looking for, but.
So, a quick, quick thought. So Counselor Ireland just said that she's going to ask this no matter what. Are we okay pulling the question for now? Or do we, is there any argument right now to revise this? Cause we want some form of it. If we don't have a strong argument to keep it, then maybe we pull it, cause we're gonna be asking it twice in two different versions.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine to keep it. I think it's a fascinating question, even if we get a list of a hundred things. So one takes that amount of time.
All right.
Their priorities.
Thumbs up, thumbs down? Keep it as is. Okay.
But number sixteen, do we still need that? That we're gonna beef up the resume question? Or do we wanna make that like any, is there one thing you want to highlight from your, you know? If, if they wanna deep dive on one thing that they've done. It's repetitive.
I think so, since we're not requiring a cover letter, cause that's usually like what people do on cover letter.
Good thoughts on that?
If they were resume, I don't, I don't think that's needed that badly. Providing a resume is a little redundant.
Um, well, the question's already there, so we're just revising it slightly.
Well, maybe it's would you, what previous work experience civic activity or other volunteer service would you highlight?
What you think was most important for this position?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
It'd be funny if someone says no to number eighteen. That would be a nice screening question.
Go through one through seventeen. I, I know, he's gonna go.
Hundred million dollar surplus, long answer, and then they get to that now. We don't have time for this.
We don't give them a whole lot of room if they're right.
Oh, would this be paper or electronic?
Just brought that question to me as well, so uh Clark, if you could expand.
So, the, the plan was to have it online, but if somebody requested a paper copy, we could provide it for them.
Okay, all right.
A Google Doc or what?
I'm still working on the tool with um. I'm, I'm still working on the best, most aesthetically pleased tool, but I'll have it by tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think that brings at least myself to the next clarifying questions, which is, once they are delivered, I assume that they're being delivered to yourself. And so could you outline what those steps look like? So then are you going to be emailing them to us? Or are we gonna wait until we have a meeting? What does that look like?
So, um, the application process will close on December second, and um then I. What we've done in the past, if you do not like this process, we can revise it. We have compiled binders. With all the applications and all, I, at that point, I can email you and tell you how many applications we've got. So, it can get everyone thinking about how they want to handle the next steps. But we would compile binders for each council member, so you can go through them. And um start making your initial selections. And then, a lot of this next steps after that start to depend on how many applications we have. We will have a discussion on December eighth and what that looks like, sort of is driven by how many app, do we need to narrow down some of these applications? Are we ready to talk about interview questions? Do you want to submit the interview questions beforehand? So, it, it is, there's a lot of discretion you have right now. And there's also um a lot of flexibility, but keeping in mind, you know, if we have five applications. That's gonna look a lot different than if we have sixty-eight.
Right, that makes sense. I was just looking at the calendar real quick, and so by the eighth, we will have a meeting together, and so we can discuss it at that time. Sounds like, once again, it all resides on that, so.
Yes, yes. We do have um the dates held of December twelfth in the evening and December thirteenth. For interviews. Um I'm not saying you have to use both those days, but we've put those holes on the calendar, cause that's what you were recalling last time. Um and so, you know, you could have a day and a half full of interviews if that's what you choose to do.
It, it may be helpful given the fact that they make this, you know, four or five days away from the interview process. That as part of the instructions, you let people know that the interviews are on the twelfth and thirteenth, because if we're not deciding who gets an interview until the eighth. That's pretty short notice for applicants.
It's actually already on the website. It's uh, the website is up kind of advertising what's gonna happen, and that is the interviews will be held that day. And we will make sure that's highlighted in more than one way, so people are really aware.
Last thought, and this is probably unnecessary, but in my day job, I'm going through an R and P process right now, so. Um, our feedback form, do we want that to look uniform for everyone? Are we all comfortable taking our own notes? Just gonna put that out there. Feedback form, we put like, you know, how did they score one through five on this question? We're okay with our own notes. That's just more work, I don't think. Okay, just putting that out there before we end up in the position of interviewing them on more ground. Okay.
The last thing that I would like to bring up, and I handed this out just so it was sitting in front of you, is this is in the council rules. And it is how you will eventually vote on the candidates. I know this seems a little premature, but I did want everybody thinking about this. Um, when you narrow down, however you narrow down, uh then you come to your public vote. Which is tentatively scheduled for December fifteenth. The first round, everybody votes, and if a candidate gets zero votes, they're knocked off the list. And that continues till somebody gets the majority vote. If you go through five votes and there is no candidate chosen, all the candidates are thrown back in. So you vote on the ones that got zero again. Um, so this explains it better than the way I just did. But I want, because, because it's uh, be- because it. Because it, it is an unusual process, I just wanted you to all see it before it was sprung on you the night of the fifteenth.
To clarify, we're gonna have a candidate's name, and then we all do a vote. And then we have another candidate's name, and then we all do a vote. Is that right?
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be that way. We can choose how we bring the candidate forward. It's just that if the candidate doesn't get votes, they're not allowed to move on to the next round. If there's not a majority, and we don't. Does that make sense? Like, we, we can, uh, we have the opportunity, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the opportunity to say. You're only voted on if you're nominated by someone on the council on that meeting. So not every candidate that got interviewed necessarily gets an opportunity to get voted on.
I'm trying to, the way you explained it's not the way I recall it, or the way you explained it. I mean, so you have fifty people in, and say each of you pick one person out of those fifty, those six people move on next round, then we voted on. Out of those six people, and then we kept doing it until it was either narrowed down. Or if we couldn't come to consensus on the last vote, then everybody got thrown back in. Is that right?
So, it's after five rounds, so, yeah. After, you have ten, and let's say eight people get a vote. Then those eight move forward. I know that mathematically doesn't work out. So seven people move forward, six people move forward. And then those six are thrown back in, and then they, you vote again, and four people move forward. And then you continue that through five, and after the fifth one, if you haven't come to consensus, if somebody has not gotten the majority. Then you throw all the candidates that were narrowed down back into the pool.
And the, the reason behind that is because in the past, this is happening with the mayor pro templo, where we were three-three and went on forever. But in the past, I think it was with Chris Hicks is what I recall. The mayor might know better than I. But I know uh Mayor Atchison at the time, this was when I was part of that process, and you've went through this process where definitely. They didn't wanna sit there all night voting on the same people. They wanted to try to force a consensus by switching out who was in it. So like, one time I went through it, first round, it was Shannon Bird and I, they got to fifth though, everybody went back in. So that way you're not just sitting there voting on those two people all night trying to decide between them, cause somebody might change their mind.
Thank you. Uh, clear as much.
It has worked.
Okay.
I, it has worked.
Last question, at least for mine, in case it's not clear for everyone else, how is it that we all submitted our vote for our person to get them to that round for voting? Do we send that to you?
So, um, everybody who had the interview in the past has been voted on in the public. That doesn't mean that it has to be that way, but that is what has happened.
You bet. You're actually asking about your vote, right? So, what we did is we took a piece of paper, we wrote down on the piece of paper who our pick was, the clerk selected those papers, and then the clerk. Or somebody would, from the clerk's office would take that paper from us. She would look at the papers and say, this person got one vote, this person got one vote. And then whoever had votes got to stay in, and then you can do that process till you hit fifth round or consensus.
Yeah, that's correct.
It was anonymous behind. As said by, it was said by council.
Anonymous, but I believe it's corrigible.
It is, it is.
Yeah, but our, it's just like our mayor pro templo, it's anonymous. Okay, is. Is there anyone else who has any further questions on the process? Okay. Feel good? We're all set? Okay?
Fifty minutes. Five minutes, three.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm checking.
Three minutes.
It's on you, man.
I just found a lot of people I really have to.
All right. Our next agenda item is the twenty-twenty-six budget development process debrief. And I said to Jody in pre-meeting that he and I need to go over everything. You know, staff, you, you kept it in front of us for twelve months. The budget is our value statement. I think it really helped with everything you did last year, um, for the community to get a better chunk at a time of the budget. And I look at your questions around here and I can't answer any more than it should just be repeated what you did last year because it was fantastic. Now, I will see what anybody else says.
I agree a hundred percent. Just do it exactly how you did it last year.
I have one request looking at budgets for other cities, which I did. Um, one thing that they break out is the benefits for the employees. They don't all pay a whole nine percent increase that is happening there every year. Sometimes employees have to pay more of that in some cities. And, and the city council actually votes on the benefit package in many cities. And we're just including it all into the budget and not breaking that down. We really don't know what that is actually, and how much more they're paying. Or actually the taxpayers are paying for that because the taxpayers are also having increases in their medical benefits. And then they're paying for your medical benefits besides. So I would like that broken out.
So Camilla?
Uh, I have nothing to add. I think it was beautiful. I did want to add that I thought the budget town halls we had were extremely helpful. And so I'm hoping that we can just integrate those going forward as kind of the norm that we regularly schedule those. Uh, but everything was fantastic. Uh, and as the mayor said, having it in front of us at least once a month the entire year, I think is a healthy way to do this. I realize it's intensive, but I hope it brings less work at the end of the whole ordeal, so.
Jose?
I would repeat all of that. I think it's, it was a perfect budget year process. The only thing I would change is, or to improve, is, uh, the communication related to certain aspects of the budget. So public communication on, for example, the millions of dollars saved with the water plant, right? I think we, we could have very specific areas of the budget in terms of like what we're doing, uh, surpluses, savings, the, the, there's, the reserves. There's different elements that we can educate the public on more intentionally and much more intensely. It's all of a civics one-on-one, but breaking up the budget into pieces so that it's not just doing these meetings that the public can learn what's happening. But there's, um, evergreen content online that they could look at for different parts of what's happening. So that could help educate the public on various aspects.
Come on. Yeah, okay. Said, I don't know which question those answers. But when we had the, okay, let me go back to say, I think the process was fantastic. So great iterative process. Um, and I love that you actually got a little more in-depth on, um, the community requests um, this past year, which I felt like wasn't as transparent or, or, you know, or out there as much on the year before. So, um, my only comment was when we had the, uh, directors come in and talk about their departments. I was hoping that we would get more of a, um, analysis of the metrics they're trying to hit and if there were any gaps that we should be trying to help identify in the next budget year. Um, because we got great overviews of what's happening and sort of what's already been budgeted. But for me, it was hard to understand, well, what do you need? What, what can we possibly do better if there's something that, you know, like Public Works, for example, if there's, um, man, we, we put this much money in streets, but whoo, we need to focus in on this one metric and this, if we put more money here, this is where we could go to make it even more improved. Um, same thing like, I don't know, if it's like community services, oh, we need, um, we budgeted this year with X amount of, um, business assistance and we blew through it. So, and we have high demand. So just kind of helping us to qualify or identify where some priorities might need to be. That was the only thing. I, that's what I was looking for in those conversations. I don't feel like it was highlighted.
I would just say to you that, like, I don't, I don't disagree with your intent that, but ask you all to remember that we just failed that increase because we don't have some sort of surplus of money laying around, even if there was a need. I mean, you, not that you should do it, but you should be prepared to reprioritize dollars. On that note, the only other thing that I've, um, did bring this idea to Jody. Um, I think it would be very wise, and I know you already do the work of tracking all the public safety dollars. If you had some sort of public register for that, if you really want transparency, one of the things that I heard over and over again is people didn't believe that the money was gonna stay with it. And I know the money does stay with it, but it's just a bad taste people have from the federal and state governments and the fact that they don't do that. But people are absolutely through to win some trust with the public, especially as you implement a new public safety cap and be able to show exactly what those dollars are outgoing. Somebody when I very first started, I'd asked that I push, they called it a public check registry just to where money's spent. Um, I don't think that that's necessary for every dollar you spend, but for every dollar you spend for a particular tax you ask for like this, I think it makes a lot of sense. But I think that'd be a huge value. And plus it just shows the hard work that, that that office does in, in terms of tracking that money. Um, I thought it was funny when the mayor brought up how excited you guys were to be able to show that to her since you do all the work of tracking it. So why not let the public enjoy that?
And I was the first person to ask in thirty years, or twenty years.
So, so I asked that same question on Saturday during the onboarding and there, on, there's a transparency portal that's online now and there's a budget piece of that and there will be a whole tab just for three H that will show all of the various elements and everything that's, that gets accounted to it. So it's definitely in the plans.
And can I, can I say that with city council's decision tonight, uh, direction in the special meeting of city council, um, echoing your words from just a few moments ago, we are going to push out a positive story about, uh, trans, uh, city council's transparency direction tonight, which is to approve the budget structure specifically for three H. And we will set up that three H tile in our transparency, uh, page to people can go and see every penny in real time as it comes in, as real as we can get. I don't know if we can get to have a little ticker that comes in, but maybe it's weekly or monthly that comes in and then every penny that goes out on three H and those are gonna match. And so, or, yeah.
Hey, I can add, so the, very specifically, the action tonight included establishing two new funds specifically for tracking these, these funds, so three H, uh, and a transportation fund. Uh, in addition to that, and this is what councillor Zodi was getting, uh, getting at, on the transparency page, there already is an actual checkbook register. So all our, all our transactions are live essentially the next day, um, that are already out there. So we have that and we'll be adding certainly after January first, those new funds in there. So those are very clear as well.
So we should be talking about louder than, like, if I didn't know that was there.
Yep.
That's something we should be talking louder about.
Yep. And harvesting your words, that's, that's the takeaway. We're going to, we're going to, uh, be much more overt and direct and tell people this is the transparency portal. This is how you track what comes in on three H and what goes out on three H. And in addition, you can do all these other things. You can check daily where the city money is being spent in any of our areas, like every single dollar, penny actually. Yep. We'll get that story out.
We heard our initial reactions. I don't know if it saves some time. If you still want us to break into groups, the floor is not yours.
Say no.
I can't imagine staff would be upset leaving at eight-thirty-five in the evening.
Well, first I just wanna say thank you very much, not only for your time this evening, but throughout this year. We started twenty-twenty-six this time. Last year, when we recapped twenty-twenty-five, your feedback guided what twenty-twenty-six budget development looked like. We will take your feedback that we received this evening and we'll continue to tweak what twenty-twenty-seven. It's crazy to say because we haven't finished twenty-twenty-five yet, so what twenty-twenty-seven development looks like because that will begin in January as we start to meet and determine what those steps are, bringing in the departments and possibly tweaking what those presentations are to, to better meet and serve your, your needs. So we just appreciate your time. So was your leadership throughout this process was tremendous. They got us to this point and we appreciate your partnership. So we are comfortable taking this feedback and, and moving forward and building on twenty, on this for twenty-twenty-seven. And we just asked along the way, if, if we are stepping outside of what your expectations are, please let us know sooner than later so that we can pause and regroup to make sure that we don't get to August or study session September, which we already have on our calendar. For the twenty-twenty-seven budget and not hitting what your expectations are, we wanna make sure we bring them along the way. So just thank you for your time and your feedback. We appreciate it.
Anything, Mr. Lindsay? Well, from the bottom of our hearts to all of you out there, um, fabulous job. Um, excited to add three H to the, to the mix. Um, it was a hard fought battle. We took a year to do it, but we got it done. And, um, it'll be exciting to watch all of that unfold. So you did a great job, great team. Thanks. We're adjourned.
Thank you.